All right, ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to call the August 22 meeting of the Huntsville Planning Commission to order. I'd like to welcome you to the meeting tonight. My name is Les Tilery, and I'm the chairman of the Planning Commission. In case you, this is your first meeting, I'd like to just give you a little overview of how the Planning Commission functions. The Planning Commission consists of 12 regular members and two supernumerary members. Each member is a volunteer appointed by the mayor. The Planning Commission is made up of two subcommittees, the zoning subcommittee and the subdivision subcommittee. Each regular member of the Planning Commission is assigned to one of these two committees. Each committee meets separately from the Planning Commission meeting, and the zoning committee meets on the second Wednesday, and the subdivision committee meets on the third Wednesday of each month at 7:30 a.m. on the seventh floor of City Hall. And these committee meetings are open to the public, just like this meeting is. The primary responsibility of the Planning Commission are to recommend zoning ordinance amendments, annexation, and zoning requests to the city council, to adopt and apply subdivision recommendations, to approve location, character, and extent requests, to approve city master plans. We approve vacation and right-of-way requests, street name change requests, and plat vacation requests. The Planning Commission is supported by an excellent planning department which reviews each item that comes before the commission to make sure that it meets all the requirements of ordinances, rules, and regulations that apply to development projects throughout the city. At this time, I'd like for our members to introduce themselves, and we'll start down here on the far right.
Devin Keith.
Carlos Matthews.
Lefrida Jordan.
Donna Hendricks.
TJ Mears.
Sally Warden.
John McMuller.
Jim McGuffey, Planning Department.
And behind us, we have Claudia Anderson and Michelle Jordan. Okay, the first item of business is adoption of minutes.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, now we'll move to the public hearing portion of our agenda. Just a few ground rules. If you have, if an item comes up and you have a comment about each item, I'd ask you to move to one of the podiums on either side of the room, give us your name and address, and then make your comments. So the first item under public hearings is John Hunt Park Master Plan, Park Design Standards.
John Hunt Park Master Plan is located southwest city, north of Airport Road, and east of Memorial Parkway. This item will be presented by City Administrator John Hamilton.
Yes, sir.
Good evening. Thanks for giving us the opportunity to present this and discuss with you what we're wanting to do for the city here. What's before you is not the John Hunt Park Master Plan, but specifically is intended to address certain design standards for any vertical structures that are built in the park going forward, as well as informing design standards for existing structures as they go through renovations. As you know, John Hunt Park is a significant facility for our community, and it's one that's in very early phases of development, and we expect that to continue to develop for a number of years going into the future. And so I would expect the Planning Commission to continue to see items coming up related to John Hunt, particularly LCNE requests for facilities to be built in John Hunt Park. To date, most of the effort related to development of the park has really been infrastructure, the street network that's going in right now, dealing with drainage issues, utilities, and those kind of things, and a lot of design that's ongoing to begin delivering program here in the very near future. I think it was at your last council meeting that we brought before you for LCNE, the sand volleyball complex. And while you approved that, we're really bringing you tonight, in addition to these design standards, an additional item that you have is really a redo on that volleyball complex, and we appreciate you considering that. While we were going through that process, we'd also started the conversation about the fact that we were beginning to have too much disparity in terms of the appearance, a lack of cohesiveness amongst the facilities in John Hunt. The buildings that are there already suffer from that, and as we brought more and more items, the problem was only going to get worse. And in fact, what we brought you on that sand volleyball complex would have been another design for a facility in that park. And so we have a strong desire and a recommendation that we require ourselves to make all those facilities have a cohesive look, a cohesive feel, and make sure that folks understand that they are all tied together in a single cohesive master plan of a large part. So I'm going to allow Mr. Alpha, Jeffrey Alpha, our staff architect, to go through the details of it, but our intent is to, as we continue to design facilities, whether we do the design internally or if we contract it out to an outside architect, that these design standards inform any designs that they do. And so as we bring you LCNE requests, not only do you do your normal consideration of, does it look appropriate, is it appropriately located and things, but also, does it actually meet the standards that we've set for ourselves so that we continue to have a cohesive look and feel amongst all these facilities? Part of the process that we ask Mr. Alpha to go through is go assess the existing facilities and look at, how can we, with reasonable modifications, tie them together, and then apply those same architectural features to new facilities? And so what he will walk through is what those specific design elements would be, so that as we get closer to in-state of the park, when you go out there, you actually have a cohesive-looking park. So I'll ask Mr. Alpha now to follow me and walk you through what those specific design elements are that we would ask become absolute standards for our facilities in John Hunt Park specifically.
One of the things we had to balance was, how do we tie, as you could see, so many different buildings, styles, sizes, color, and texture with budget, function, without hamstringing any design professional coming before you for future renovations of existing building, as well as proposal of new construction? So that's one of the tasks we set out to tackle, was how do you tie these six examples all in John Hunt Park together? With balancing budget and allowing the design professional the freedom, also where the budget allows, take these designs and make it better. So one of the ways to do that was with color, texture, and building materials. One of the key elements of John Hunt Park was the roof color. It would be a simple way to go in and retrofit a building. As you could see, the, many of the buildings, their roof has reached their life expectancy. One way to replace that and begin to tie all the pieces together would be to have a green metal roof. The tennis center already has that. One of the soccer observation buildings, that roof is reaching its life expectancy. That's one way to do it. Another element is concrete block. Many of the buildings throughout John Hunt Park already have painted CMU, concrete masonry units. That would be another way to start tying the buildings together. So as we went through each of the existing buildings, we came up with the color palette that you see here, using the green metal standing seam roof, the painted CMU, and then as we developed this, we put this together in a design standard package. And as it evolves, we would bring that to you for additional approval, revisions. As we articulate it further, we'll get into proposal of design, you know, should the design professional want to add a design element to an existing building, or how does it tie it together further? That would all be proposed, approved by the Planning Commission, and then set in stone to be followed for all future renovations and future new projects. Thank you.
Mr. Hamilton, are y'all, are you complete with your comments?
Yes.
Okay. Ms. Reed, do you have a comment?
Is that all you're going to show on John Hunt Park? It is? Okay, yeah, I got lots of comments.
We're in the public hearing, so...
Jackie Reed, 303 Jack Coleman Drive. John Hunt Park is an item that's got me confused. I know, I thought, they can't sell that property. I'm not sure who they can lease it to and let them develop it. And I think you all need to put a master plan up there, and let's see that before any of you vote on it. This is a thing that concerns me, changing the location, the character, and all the stuff I see what you're doing to John Hunt Park. That's one of the prizes of our city, where the golf course was given up for the seniors for the bicycles, which I have a problem with, but they've done that, and I want to know who come up with changing John Hunt's Park. Did we pay a developer? Can I ask that question? Who did we pay to come up with a master plan for John Hunt Park? Can they tell you, can the city tell you that?
We have a master plan for John Hunt Park that was approved two years ago, and this presentation that we're seeing tonight is to standardize some, the different types of buildings and facilities that go in that park.
But it's got a lot to do with more stuff and just changing everything that they want. Character, location, and all that mess on here. Y'all don't care about none of that? Have you done your homework on John Hunt Park?
Yes, ma'am. As part of standard practice for all facilities that get constructed in the city, by the city, they have to come before the Planning Commission.
Well, I know what the Planning Commission's going to do when they come upon them, but I'm saying, can they lease the 35 acres in John Hunt Park and let developers build their own buildings? Does it not have to be used for recreational? There's just a lot of questions out there that, over the years, I've been standing down here and listening to it, but we've got a new administration that wants to change everything, so we need to know. Can developers go in there and we give them the land and let them develop it and take their money? Is that what we're setting up to do? That's my question, and you all are sitting here to make a big decision.
Ms. Reed, what we're talking about in this particular instance is just a standard for the buildings that are being built there and nothing else. It's just for the character and extent to kind of make the park more cohesive so that it looks the same in that area, to give John Hunt Park more of a distinct, upstanding view in the area, so it's an upgrade to John Hunt Park. They've got to do renovations to these buildings anyway, so making those buildings look the same so that no matter where you are in the park, you recognize that you're in John Hunt Park. So it's just an upgrade. This has nothing to do with a sale of land.
Okay, so the city's going to upgrade what we got already.
Exactly, and anything else that is built will have to follow that standard that they're talking about going forward.
We're not changing location, and character, and all that mess.
Well, that's exactly what we're talking about. This is setting the standard for that in the future, so anything that is built must be built to this standard and must look the same in John Hunt Park. So you can't just go stick some building out there that looks completely different than what the park has. It must follow this standard, so that's what they're presenting here to us tonight.
Does it have to be used, John Hunt Park, for recreation only? Do you know that?
I'm going to let Mr. Hamilton, would you respond to that?
Yeah, so first off, just to be clear, nothing that's before you tonight changes any of the already approved uses. So this particular item, as Mr. Matthews stated, is specific to design elements on any new buildings that get built, and also, when we renovate an existing building, you would have to do this. So for example, if we go out there and replace the roof on the baseball softball complex, that new roof would have to adhere to the color green. So we couldn't put a silver roof back on it, we'd have to put a green roof on it. When we go renovate the existing buildings in the soccer complex, the columns on one of those buildings do not fit with the design standards. We will have to replace those columns with ones that fit within the design standards so that it has a cohesive look. And when later, on a further agenda item tonight, when you see the design that we have for the volleyball complex, you'll see those specific design elements where the columns are purposely done to match in look and feel the columns that are on the existing tennis complex. It has a green roof that matches the texture, the color of the building matches with what's being proposed right now for these design standards. So everything you see tonight is in accordance with that. The location of that volleyball complex is in the existing master plan. There's nothing that's being proposed to change that location. It's in accordance with the approved master plan. The purpose for tonight for that item is just to approve the appearance of the buildings and that site plan, approving that it does in fact fit with the master plan, and that if you approve these design standards, then confirming that that new construction also fits with these design standards. As to the use, there is in fact a city ordinance that requires portions of John Hunt Park to be used solely for recreation. It's fairly complex, too complex to just fully describe here verbally, but there inside that ordinance, there are some caveats to some small portions of John Hunt Park that are set aside, that are not underneath that exclusion. But despite that, there is no effort within the city right now to do anything other than recreational uses and park uses within John Hunt Park. All of it, even those portions that are not actually set aside purely for recreation. So there's nothing about the master plan that we're proposing to change tonight. There's nothing about the uses we're proposing. There are no private developers involved in any portion of John Hunt Park at this time. So are there portions where if the city wanted to propose going to a private use? There are some portions, the portions that were not set aside by the city council for recreational use, but the reality is there's no such proposal on the table. We know that there was several years ago. That proposal went away, and so that conversation has died, and there is absolutely no private development currently proposed inside of John Hunt Park.
Well, may I ask you, is the soccer field, or whatever that you've already got, the city's going to fix the building up? Have you got a contract for that? Is that contracted out, or is that going to be city recreation?
No. So none of the existing buildings are currently proposed for renovations. We expect that to come in the near future. I would expect, within the next couple of years, you would see us begin the effort of renovating some of those. So the existing proposal, the only project that we're bringing right now is actually construction of the volleyball complex. That would be all new construction. It will be like any city construction project, will be bid out, and some private construction company will win the contract to build that facility for us. It'll be wholly owned and operated by the city.
I'll be here to every meeting that y'all vote on this thing, because I'm guarding it real close. I've been here 30 years guarding John Hunt Park. Thank you.
All right, is anyone else to comment on John Hunt Park Design Standards? All right, hearing none, the public hearing is closed. All right, the next item of public hearings is Maple Ridge Phase 3.
Maple Ridge Phase 3 is located northwest city, north of Highway 72 West and west of Vault Road. This item is zone R2A and is approximately 18.69 acres. This item was before you for a re-layout in July of 2017. This moves forward for preliminary of the first 63 lots.
Is there anyone here to comment on Maple Ridge Phase 3? Hearing none, the public hearing is closed. Item 3 is Overton Phase 3. It's been withdrawn. Do we want to, do we have, do we need to have a public hearing on that anyway?
No.
Okay, so we'll move on. Item 4 Riverside at Butler Basin, that has also been withdrawn. Item 5 is Whitesburg Estates, Jackson Bend Addition Phase 2.
Whitesburg Estates, excuse me. Whitesburg Estates at Jackson Bend Phase 2 is located southeast city, west of South Memorial Parkway and north of Rothmore Drive. This item is zone R1A and R2. This item is overall 50.74 acres and was before you for a layout in preliminary in June of 2017. What is before you this month is an adjustment of Lot Number 1, which was originally located at the very entrance of the Jackson Bend subdivision, right here where my cursor lies, and that Lot 1 has been moved to the north, away from the previous homeowner that requested that there may be an issue with the side yard, her feeling uncomfortable with the side yard. So the developer has made that concession in this particular instance.
Is there anyone here to comment on Whitesburg Estates, Jackson Bend Addition Phase 2? Hearing none, the public hearing is closed. Item 6 is location, character, and extent. 6A is Merrimack Sports Complex.
Merrimack Sports Complex is located southeast city, south of Ivy Avenue and east of Trianna Boulevard. I'll turn over to Chris Waters from Chapman Sisson Architects for presentation.
All right, thank you. This is the master plan for Merrimack Sports Complex. You can see Ivy up at the top of the screen there. Drake is coming in at an angle at the bottom. The senior center is kind of on the site towards the bottom right. Fire station is that white blob down at the bottom. So what we're doing here for the city is expanding the soccer fields or the sports fields that are out there at Merrimack. That's on the other side of the drainage ditch that's colored in blue that you see there on the left side of the sheet. We're going to be doing this in a couple of phases as budgets are available, but the top darker green, those four soccer fields that you see at the top with parking on either side, those would be Phase 1, and that would include four synthetic fields, so all of that would be a new synthetic field that the city's very excited about. The two larger blue squares that you see are new restroom facilities that match all of the city standards and colors and all of that, and the two smaller squares that you see on opposite sides or pavilions, that would be on the site as well. To connect the existing Merrimack Soccer Complex with the new Soccer Complex, the city is undertaking a Greenway project that's connecting the two, but our portion in this project is to do a pedestrian bridge that'll cross, kind of right over that little spot, based on the cursor, and that'll be a prefabricated bridge that again matches the city standards with that. If you flip to the next page, so you can see there in those photographs, that's the existing facilities on Merrimack, and really, these buildings are exactly the same, so the whole facility will tie together. That's all I've got.
Thank you. Is there anyone here to comment on the Merrimack Sports Complex? All right, hearing none, the public hearing is closed. Item 6B Landscape Management Facility Parking Lot Renovation.
This item is located southwest city, south of Governor's Drive and west of Memorial Parkway. I'll turn over to Diana Cook from General Service for a presentation.
This project is the improvements of the parking lots at 2411 Ninth Avenue, which is currently the Parks and Recreation Office, the Sporting Commission's Office, and the Facilities Management Office. Currently, the two parking lots in question are east and west of the structure, and they're gravel parking lots and some grass, as you can see. Our improvements are going to include the current PVA requirements for lighting and landscaping, ADA access to the structure, including improvements to the front of the structure, and then sidewalk improvements for accessibility. So other than that, it's just going to be your standard asphalt and gutter, curb and gutter parking lot. Thank you.
Thank you. Is anyone here to comment on Landscape Management Facility Parking Lot Renovation? Hearing none, the public hearing is closed. Item 6C Revised Character of John Hunt Sand Volleyball.
This item is located southwest city, south of Airport Road and west of South Memorial Parkway. This item was before you for approval in July of 2017 and will now fit that of the standards which were presented previously this afternoon, or this evening. And I'll turn over to Jeffrey Alpha for a presentation.
As the sand volleyball complex was approved last month, the administration really wanted to take a look at, how can we sort of separate John Hunt Park from the standard pavilion designs that we have throughout the city, but still balance, character, budget, durability? So based on the standards that we came up with, that we're looking for you all to approve tonight, this would be, if that's step one, this would be step two. We took those components, the colors and the textures and the building materials, and did a, really, a complete redesign, we're balancing really the budget. So we swapped out the stained, pressure-treated wood for concrete masonry units. This will provide a little bit more durability, and added a design element in the front to sort of cue everybody. And so our standard pavilions normally have a very plain, simple, but a durable look to them. The design element will give the visual cue of, this is the front, this is where you come in and disperse throughout the park. So that's what we have really before you, is just really changing the character and showing you as example of, instead of being concerned about the renovations applying design standards, this is an example of what would, how we would apply the design standards you're approving to a new building.
Is there anyone here to comment on the revision to character of John Hunt Sand Volleyball Facility?
Yeah. Is the city building that building there?
Ms. Reed.
Well, you're changing the character. What's changing the character mean?
Essentially, as Jeffrey has, Mr. Alpha has...
I can't hear what he's saying.
Essentially, as Mr. Alpha has presented, that this kind of changes the color schemes of, which is the character of the building. Previously, it was one solid gray color, that's what you see currently throughout John Hunt Park and some of our other facilities within, throughout the city. Here, we are establishing and applying the standards that were presented this evening to this particular building. This project has been approved, but since the character of the building, meaning the colors of the building, are changing, we want to, they therefore want to apply those particular colors to this newly constructed building.
Ms. Reed, to help you understand, I think they're trying to get you to realize...
I understand a lot about the Planning Commission, but go ahead.
Okay, they're trying to get you to understand that the building will be uniform, and a prime example of that, if you think about One Credit Union in North Alabama, they're recognizable because of their blue roofs. So I think what they're trying to do is make sure the character and all the buildings are uniform, and they all will be recognizable with the green roof throughout the park.
It's really hard for me to think that y'all can vote anything tonight when a master plan wasn't even sticking up there for anybody to see it tonight. That is not a public hearing, when a master plan didn't even show up. So y'all do what you have to do, but I'm saying, when you're dealing with John Hunt Park, and I have some questions, bring it to the city council or let me go to a meeting somewhere. That needs to be brought before the public. That's pretty serious business. So thank you for being good to me, but now when I ask some questions, city ought to know what's going on. Sometimes I wonder. Thank you.
Is anyone else here to comment on the revision to the sand volleyball court character? All right, hearing none, the public hearing is closed.
Thank you.
All right, item 7, we'll move to zoning, public hearing. 7A is vault zoning.
This item is newly annexed property. This property was recently annexed and became effective August 2017. This property is approximately 21.70 acres. It's currently vacant land. Planning staff would like to propose a zoning designation of Residence 2A, which will be consistent with the adjacent zoning, as well as it will accommodate the future development for this property. It is a proposed senior multifamily development that will locate on this property once the property has been properly zoned.
Is there anyone here to comment on the item 7A, vault zoning? Hearing none, the public hearing is closed. Item 7B, Drake 4 zoning.
This property is also newly annexed property. This was also annexed earlier this month, in August 2017. This property will be in addition to the existing Hampton Ridge subdivision. This property is located on the east side of Old Bit Cove Road. Planning staff would like to propose a zoning designation of Residence 1A, which is consistent with all of the Hampton Ridge subdivision.
Is there anyone here to comment on item 7B, Drake 4 zoning? Hearing none, the public hearing is closed. Item 7C is Highway 72 zoning.
This property is also newly annexed property. It's approximately 6.39 acres. This property is located on the north side of 72 West and located west of Providence Main Street. Planning staff would like to propose a zoning designation of Highway Business C4, which is consistent with the adjacent zoning next door.
Is there anyone here to comment on Highway 72 zoning? Hearing none, the public hearing is closed. And that concludes our public hearings portion of our agenda. All right, we'll move on to part two of our agenda under subdivision, and Ms. Krimcher, would you provide us the subdivision committee report?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The subdivision committee met on August 16, and here are our recommendations. Maple Ridge Subdivision Phase 3, the committee recommends preliminary approval on 63 lots.
Move to approve. Is there any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Nature's Cove Phase 5, a re-subdivision of Nature's Cove East, presented for final approval on 137 lots.
Move to approve.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Jim, is it in order for a final?
Yes, sir. It is in order with...
It is in order with sidewalks to be installed August sixteenth, two thousand and eighteen, and with improvements to be installed August seventeenth, two thousand and eighteen.
Okay. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
The third item is Taylor Court Subdivision Phase Two, a re-subdivision of Track One of Taylor Court Phase One. This is presented for final approval on one lot.
Move to approve.
Jim, is it in order for a final?
Yes, sir. With sidewalks and improvements to be installed August twenty-third, two thousand and eighteen.
Is there any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
The final subdivision item is Whitesburg Estates Jackson Bend Addition Phase Two. The committee recommends re-layout and re-preliminary approval on forty-three lots, with a waiver on the non-radio lot line between Lot One and Common Area.
Move to approve.
Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I need to recuse myself.
Okay. Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item three, the two, the master plan John Hunt Park design standards. These are the design standards for future projects located in John Hunt Park. A public hearing tonight was held.
Move to approve.
Any discussion? I would like to open discussion. I would, I appreciate the fact that our city is looking to, looking to improve the way our facilities look. I think this is a big step forward in us recognizing that we have a responsibility to the community to put our big, our best foot forward. We are a high-tech city, trying to, trying to do some things in our city that, that improve our life for its residents, live, work, play are a big part of our, the big picture, one of the major principles of our big-picture master plan, which is still in development, but is very exciting. And I would just like to commend the work that Jeffrey and Mr. Hamilton have done to put this together. I would also say that standardizing materials, colors, textures are a really good thing, but I would also like to say that if there are some specific projects within John Hunt Park that may warrant special treatment outside of these specific materials, let's don't get hung up on using, you know, setting this such as a hard and fast rule. So, if there's not a special project, for example, an amphitheater or some signature facility within the park that everybody is gonna, in town is gonna see, people visiting our city will see, let's not, let's loosen the guidelines a little bit for, for very special circumstances, and those are, those circumstances are rare, but I think, I think it would be appropriate to, if there needs to be a design statement made, a signature facility, we need to be able to do that and push the, push the standards a little bit.
Mr. Chair, I think that came up during the committee meeting and Jeffrey reiterated that that was their intent, that this, may we recognize it?
Yeah, go ahead, Jeff.
Yeah, Les, you echoed everything that I did in the meetings we had before the planning commission, arms waving above our head. This is, this is a helpful guide, but it should in no way hinder the design professional who, especially in a higher-profile project like an amphitheater or something like that. This is supposed to be positive and not handcuffing them. So, I think everything you said is valid, is let's not get hung up on the tiny little details when they become a stumbling block rather than a helpful tool, so.
And this is such a positive guide on a lot of the generic functional buildings that the city constructs and will help give it a clean, consistent, and uniform look. I think also along with that, there is some consideration across city departments. I believe planning is helping Parks and Recreation working on a signage plan. You know, those are just the little things you don't think about, but if you travel around and look at the variety of signage across the city, none of it really matches or brands, and they're all produced by different departments at different times, so Jeffrey may be involved in that as well.
The design details are often overlooked, but are very important in helping our city look in a, like a cohesive unit, so that we look like we've all kinda working together to accomplish the same thing, and I think this is a great, great start for that discussion to continue, and I hope, I hope it does continue even further than park standards, and I hope it, I hope it goes a lot farther and gets dovetailed into our master plan discussion.
Wouldn't this also save money as far as, you know, maintenance and repairs? I mean, if you're having to touch up things, it's a certain color green, it's, you know, a certain shade of gray. It just seems like the maintenance of the, the areas would be, you know, more cost-effective that way.
That is true. Jeffrey also mentioned that, that during committee meeting and also here, that as buildings are renovated in that area, that they can bring them up to these particular standards and help with some of those costs.
When you establish a standard, it also helps expedite repairs. When everyone is, has memorized a particular paint code, they can buy it in larger quantities, which reduces the cost, and it just snowballs into, there's a little bit upfront cost and you pay a little bit more to get an elastomeric coating on the concrete block, but over time, the durability, your painting that lasts, it's lasting longer, so.
Okay, any additional discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Moving on to location, character, and extent. The Merrimack Sports Complex was presented tonight and a public hearing was held.
Move to approve.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
The next item under location, character, and extent, the Landscape Management Facility Parking Lot Renovation, a public hearing was held.
Move to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? I have a question. Can you go back to the aerial?
Yes, sir.
So, this is low mill on the right.
Correct.
And the, the property directly across to the north, across Ninth Avenue, that's, is that the C six?
Yes, that was the area that was rezoned C six approximately April twenty, or February, February, between February and April of twenty seventeen, yes.
Okay. So, we're improving the parking lots for our Landscape Management Facility.
Correct. It's currently gravel.
And it will meet the landscaping and lighting standard for-
Based on current zoning ordinance, it does meet PVA and landscaping requirements.
Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
And the final item tonight is to revise the character, John Hunt Sand Volleyball. A public hearing was held.
Any discussion? Could you, I have a question. Could you go to the site plan? Is there a site plan?
I do, hold on one second. When was that, July? So, this is the item that was approved in June of twenty seventeen and under item number eight sixty-six. This is the current, this was the current facility, and the upgrades were there previously, like Jeffrey said, these were stained wood, posts that have now been converted to concrete, and-
So, my question revolves around, go back one sheet, that, that pavilion, we did not see a design for the, for this pavilion. Is it gonna still be wood and, okay, can you-
No, sir, that, this, and I apologize, I did not get you that revision. This pavilion also, which is an observation, open-air pavilion, will have the same design standards and character. All of the stained, pressure-treated wood has been removed and replaced with the concrete block. The same, it's the same column design, same green roof, same color, texture, building materials.
Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, thank you, Kelly. We're now to the zoning, part five of our agenda, zoning. Ms. Ward, would you read the zoning committee report?
Yes, sir. The zoning committee met on August the ninth, and we have the following recommendations. Number one, the balch zoning, the public hearing was held this evening.
Is there a motion?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Second item is the Drake zoning, and the public hearing was held this evening.
Move to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
And lastly, the Highway seventy-two zoning, and the public hearing was held this evening.
Move to approve.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, part six of our agenda, invocation and extension of bonds. Jim?
Yes, sir. Planning staff recommends invocation of items one through seven.
Move to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, that completes our agendas. Any further business to come forward with the planning commission?
My name is Jeff Inthinger. I just, a month or so ago, y'all handled a subdivision called Jackson Bend, the south end of town, and we had a hundred, hundred-and-fifty people here, and at that time, we made a commitment to the commission. All of our submittals were in order, but the residents had a particular issue about a particular lot, and so even though we were in order, we had committed to work on that issue to the extent that we could. We didn't know the exact situation with some of the wetlands, but since that time, we had delineated the wetlands, we were able to move the lot. We fulfilled our commitment to the neighborhood to do what we could, and we thankfully, in this case, were able, were able to satisfy them and satisfy the commission staff. But I wanted to thank all of you for taking, for that lengthy meeting and for taking the heat and for trying to do the right thing, and I know, I know I served on the planning commission a while back myself, and it is a thankless job in a lot of ways, but thank you for your support, and I hope we earned your goodwill in the future.
Okay, thank you. All right, our meeting is adjourned.